Been brought up consistently through from the beginning of each one that I've been to anyway is the question about if it's a vote or not, but I, you know, I know that that's already been discussed and so hopefully that's something that will hit the paper at some, at some point. But the other thing is, is somebody different, each meeting has brought up what other options are we looking at? Is it just a collaborative effort with the board to look towards the five school merger and, and focus kind of your efforts and energy into that? Or is anybody else working on, you know, we'll call the big school Plan A, is anybody working on Plan B, Plan C, Plan D? I mean-
There's always Plan B, C, D, E, F, and all the way down to Z.
Okay, but your slides show A.
Nothing else.
Nothing else. It's, it's just something that I've heard from the public and it's been mentioned in these meetings.
And it's a progress it works for all five schools to determine what direction they need to go. How do you know until you sit and talk with these other people?
And you can't slit your own throat either.
Yeah, I think if you're-
No, I don't think you have to talk to them about keeping our school. That's just something maybe you board members could discuss and say, what if we, what if, what if this falls through? What if it falls through?
Well, and to be honest, the reason why we're not having our work session now is because we need to spend the next few months gathering information of where we're at. And a big part of that work session is what is the what-if scenarios? A, if it becomes three schools, four schools, two schools, you know, and again, we're not looking at the two school, you know, or what if we stand alone? Because if we're gonna stand alone, we got a lot of work to do, you know, so that's kind of the what-if scenarios and that evolved from the work session. But for us to talk about it right now, we're not ready because we don't have enough information in front of us yet, let alone to be able to provide you guys enough information either.
To be truly honest, I think you've got a lot of community people who would figure pushing them to much rather be a, the two, the two school consolidate. The five school thing is scaring people half to death. I mean, they don't want a five school. I mean, I don't, I mean, I know you guys all the time dead set against us, but that is literally what I hear is they don't, they don't want a five school. But then the questions that get brought up is, is more of a two school thing and, and maybe it didn't work before, but now that this whole consolidation talk has happened, people might actually be a little bit more lenient towards those type, those conversations too.
I don't think two towns would have to get up their school. I still like the idea of a five school, maybe sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and one town and tenth, eleventh, twelfth. I think it's just an option that needs to be explored, that think outside of the box.
You know, and that might be a form of what works today, but as finances change, that might be not, you know, that might not be a workable solution either.
But if the states force the other schools to make a decision, we would be here.
Right, yes.
I mean, that's just think out of the box.
The state's gonna, you know, when they, when they're watching this thing, because trust me, the state's watching this thing right now. As they watch this, their influence is gonna increase. It will, and so, you know, because they're watching this thing.
I agree, we, I know we need, we need to plan and do something, but I think we need to keep more than one option open too. I do agree, we have to do something.
But we gotta be very careful to be very political with this thing and not stand alone.
Yeah, I know.
Being political would mean July 23rd meetings open to the public.
What's that?
Being political would mean July 23rd meetings open to the public because that's being perceived that you guys are just sliding the open meetings law by having just enough people there that doesn't create a quorum so you do not have to have it open. That creates untrust in your communities right there. Every community, I'm not just saying our community, every community, you're just sliding under that rule.
Yeah, I, I fully, you know, and, and committee work is something that we've always done, whether that's looking at personnel, whether that's looking at curriculum policies, all that.
And I agree, the county does it all the time, but they don't close the door so you can't be in there.
Whose decision was it to not make it public?
Not, I mean, that, that's just a group thing that that's, that's what people have always done. I don't think there's any question, everything that's happening in those study committees are being provided to everybody. You know, those conversations are being provided. We know that. You might not know that because, you know, we, we tend to-
There's misconception.
It's perception, it's perception. But we know here that everything that happens in those meetings is coming out to the public, whether it's through the newspaper or through the website. We know that.
So-
I can't guarantee you guys know that because you might not trust that.
You have access to, you said, well, maybe we have more access or something like that? Like what would that be or whatever?
Just sharing information with the other schools about what their issues are, financial and, and, you know.
But you're saying that's being shared.
These guys have seen the numbers and finances for years.
All that's being shared, so you don't have numbers that aren't being shared with us.
Right.
No.
It's just like, it's like, you know, you know, we come to these meetings every month and, you know, until this came up, not many people come. And, you know, we go through a lot of numbers and, and, you know, we just, we're aware of the finances of running the school and all works. And a lot of people just don't know the numbers, you know, what our budget is and expenses and whatnot. It's just, it's public information, it's just-
And I say you're not making any decisions at these, at the, at this meeting, you're just throwing, you're getting your information together and I guess, you know, I'm with everybody else, I'm not real big on a, a meeting that the public's not allowed to, but we do need to understand, you know, if they're to get anything accomplished, we can't be, so we can't all be sitting here talking for-
But you can have a meeting where you do not recognize the public, you can have them come in.
Yeah, and that is something that I brought up kind of at the beginning too, so.
I mean, because to be honest, they don't have to even recognize us now, to be completely honest.
That, that's exactly that.
Legally, they don't have to recognize anybody in the audience unless they're placed on the agenda. And, and they can form it that way. And, and these guys could do that to us tonight, to be honest, if they get tired of us, they can do that and someone's gonna have to start putting themselves on the agenda because they don't have to recognize us.
Correct.
And they can limit what we say. I mean, that, that's legally they're right to.
If I have one more thing, and I might have totally misunderstood this, but when you said we're teaching kids to leave, you know, I like look around this room and it looks to me like you're doing a hell of a job teaching them to return. Because this room is full of a lot of people here that-
How many of your classmates returned?
A lot of them.
James' class. That was a bad event, that person.
That was a bad class.
No, I, I don't believe that, I mean, I'll read it next.
I'm not a bad class, that's where we wanna be.
No, that was a bad class.
That was a bad class event.
But I'm being serious and maybe I misunderstood what you even meant in full, but I, I mean, there's a lot of-
By not, by not having forced work, you know, one thing that we came up at our last work session was we need to try somehow, some way to offer industrial tech. If we can't share it, we don't have the resources today to be able to do that, that's an area that we need for our kids to be able to receive that education in that area that ties into careers that are, that are here. You know, by not having our curriculum or opportunities in those areas, they have to go somewhere else for those jobs.
So what would it be like industrial tech? What would that be? What?
Was that Ron Suck?
Skill?
No.
Ron Suck, yeah, and, and that's the thing is ag has changed so much. You know, ag used to be also welding, it used to be building construction, it used to be all those things. Today, a student that goes off to college to receive ag education, they focus on animal science, agribusiness, those types of things. They don't receive education in simple things that, you know, used to be common, electricity, building construction, sheet rock, welding, those things. Industrial tech is that area, you know, your building construction, your AutoCAD, those areas.
And I, I'll agree with you on that.
And so I think we always commonly, we look at ag, you know, and we say it covers all those things, but that's not the truth anymore.
And I, and I agree, I, I mean, I look back to when I chose to leave town, but it was not because the school told me to leave. It's not because I was taught to leave town. I'll be honest. Ed Altemore was our guidance counselor and he did everything to try and get you to come back. Go out, get a further education, wherever it might be, come back to your community. It was my parents that told me, you're going to get nowhere in a small town. You get out while you can. But I think our parents, yeah, because, but our pa- parenting has evolved over time, to be completely honest. I think that starts at home. It's not, I don't believe it starts in school. I don't think that that's your job necessarily to teach them. It starts at home and if we don't teach our children the core values, I mean, that, that's a lost cause regardless of whether our school's eight miles out or not. It, it, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, a common thing that we've always asked our kids is, you know, do you wanna come back? And, and when we asked that question years ago, most of those kids didn't have any desire to come back here whatsoever.
Well, that's always true. I didn't, I never went down to seniors, I just sent you a picture.
There's some years in there.
Gotta know how big the market is.
Exactly.
When that question was asked, as I taught government class, asked that exact question, do you wanna come back? Most of those kids didn't wanna come back.
Oh, they did, mom.
They wanted to get the heck out of here. That has changed dramatically over the last few years. And kids wanna come back, but A, they need to have something to come back to, all right, so they need employment of some type, they need housing of some type, and that's greatly limited. What's that?
If our communities die though, the job opportunities aren't gonna be here.
Exactly, and they're bringing back three young kids.
But what's our community gonna look like?
I agree, I'm not-
Where you gotta have jobs to get them and then you gotta-
Yeah, it's a chicken before the egg concept. I totally get it, but it's a, it's a conglomeration of efforts from your community to your businesses, to your school, to your healthcare. It's not just school fights for school or school leaves town and town fights for itself. You either have to work together or it's done.
Right, right.
And I, I'll be honest, business owners are scared in this community to speak up because they're afraid they're gonna lose-
Well, yeah, that, I can see where, if you're, you know, looking vertigary, it's kind of a split town now. And now I'm sure that all the local businesses in town, you're, I'm sure that, I'm sure you're confronted with that, you know, the, the, us guys that live out in the country, we don't really think of that, but yeah, that is a legitimate, a legitimate concern to everybody who has a business in town.
You know, and I think business is a legitimate concern whether you have this school or don't as well, because we are losing businesses on Main Street every year right now. You know, so that, that's a tough scenario too. I mean, because you're losing population, you're losing kids, and you're losing businesses as we go, with or without this thing right now.
And I hope as we all go forward, we start, we make the right decisions to help everybody, whether it's the community, the, what have you. But with that, I do have to shut you off, so I appreciate everybody's input and we'll move on to the next.
Good. We do need to, study discussion items, main thing that we're focused on there was a joint meeting in the future of all five districts hosting a community meeting. The other discussion that was spent considerable time on was the vote, you know, and what type of vote, not ready to come out with that and still subcommittee work is done further on. And then the other side of it was considerable discussion took place on seven twelve versus nine twelve. And so those are something that by the next study committee meeting to bring back was maybe wanna focus on a seven twelve meeting or nine, or a seven twelve facility or a nine twelve facility. So that is probably the biggest area that we need to, to address moving forward as well. And then finally, subcommittee work, we need a representative for the legal side, investigative side, curriculum and instruction, architecture, and then economic and labor moving forward.
Okay, so you have three going, right?
Yes.
Is it the same three?
No, it, it'll be all of you. So we need one for, we need a, an individual to be on the legal committee as well as a alternate. We need an individual for the investigative as well as an alternate for that as well. And then on down the line.
You want us to volunteer then?
It'd be great.
Okay, I have the curriculum and instruction.
Okay, and I need an alternate for that.
I'll be, and I'll be an alternate for investigative.
Okay.
I'll try to be legal.
Okay.
And I can already put in that? I could probably be on the economic and labor.
Okay, and that is the one that I will be on, will be the economic and labor. And then I need an alternate for economic and labor.
Yeah.
Okay. And we need a member for investigative and an alternate for curriculum and instruction.
An alternate for curriculum and instruction.
Okay. And I need somebody to go for investigative or architecture. Gonna be right up your alley. And then I need an alternate for that one. So I need an investigative, which leaves you Stacy on that.
That's fine.
Okay, and then I need an alternate for architecture.
I guess I do all of them.
Okay. All right, and like I said, I will be heading the economic and labor and trying to tie things together and discussing with local communities or the communities what we need to do moving forward to protect all interests moving forward.
All right, let's get back to the action item, have the, that's gonna be your handbook.
Okay, only change would be page ten, and that is lesson plans changing, that's Friday, back to Monday at noon.
Okay, I'll have to do a motion. Motion. Last and final for the teacher handbook. All right.
Yes.
Damon.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Yes.
Cory.
Yep.
Okay.
Act on the iPad handbook.
The iPad handbook, the changes would be, the insurance will change, it'll remain at twenty-five dollars. However, if there is damage that takes place, it'll be a fifty-dollar deductible on there as well. Most schools did have a deductible. We tried it without. We ended up losing money on the insurance side on the year, and not that we wanna make money, but we do wanna break even. And so in the event that a student uses, utilizes their insurance, they would also play a deductible on that as fifty dollars each time they access their deductible. So as a freshman, if they use it, it's fifty dollars. If they use it again as a sophomore, it's seventy-five dollars and their deductible continues to go forward. The other side of it then is section eleven is the iPad buyback plan, and so if that device is one-year-old, they purchase that back at seventy percent of the actual costs. Two-years-old would be fifty-five percent, three-years would be forty percent. If it is a four-year-old device, meaning they got it as a freshman, they graduated, they'd be paying for it at twenty-five percent. It must be their iPad, and then anytime they didn't use their insurance, they would actually take that twenty-five dollars off. And so for instance, if the machine was a hundred and twenty, they never used their insurance for four years, they'd be able to buy that machine back for twenty dollars. The other build in there then would be if they have a four-point-O GPA, it would take a hundred dollars off that machine. A three-point-seven-five GPA, it would take seventy-five dollars off, three-point-five, fifty dollars off, three-point-O or higher, it'd take twenty-five dollars off. In the end though, we will not be writing them back a check for seventy-five dollars, so there would be a disclaimer that, you know, it would be a free device, but you're not gonna make money by not utilizing your insurance or your deductibles or those other things. So for instance, a one-year device would be estimated at three-hundred-and-thirty-five. If they didn't use their insurance, that would take off money, and then if they had a four-point-O GPA, it would take another hundred dollars off. So that would be something that they could take on to college and whatnot as well, so. So you do add the deductible, but you also add the buyback plan as part of it as well. That all makes sense?
What?
Huh?
What?
No, eighth graders aren't doing that, right?
No, and-
Was that a possibility?
We talked about it a little bit, but we just bought English books now too because, to be honest, we did some, we did some cart work with the seventh and eighth graders and they're not ready for them. You know, I mean, and they're, they're ready to an extent, but yet being left under their desk, left on top of whatever, wherever, they're not ready for them. And so nine and twelve, I think, worked out really well. Is there bugs in it? Yeah, definitely. But having textbooks on the iPad is a heck of a lot better than having it in your textbook in hand, so it's definitely a direction to head. I think the, the best thing about it is all the assignments came in all on your eBackpack. So if I had to submit an English science and social studies assignment, I submitted it all one way through eBackpack, everything's there. It documents what time you sent it, what time you received it, all that, so there's no more, I lost my homework, my dog ate it, because it showed when you received that assignment and when you sent that assignment, so. And having their textbooks available right to them is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned, you know, and, and yes, you're carrying a device that's roughly five hundred dollars, but if you put five textbooks in your locker, you got five hundred dollars for textbooks right there as well, so.
Can the kids make sure we get all the ones, the, their same iPad that they had last year?
Yeah, so if you were a junior, you get your same iPad back as a senior, and so yours, your device would be two-years-old. Freshmen coming up, they will get the seniors' old ones because we wanted to see this out and try it out before. Most likely, those freshmen will get a new iPad at some point in their career, because their, their device isn't gonna last for five years, for instance. But everybody else, the idea is to get them four-years of their device. So as a freshman, that device that you got as a freshman, you will have until you're a senior.
And then like Mark's probably taken all those iPads when she got them and checked them in and just kind of-
They're all deleted, they're erased, they're cleaned up.
To make sure they're up to speed and everything, then they're gonna, you, they'll have to put more hooks on them and everything like that, so they're gonna be utilizing a little bit more of them in the classroom, some of those classes.
Yep, and we did talk about it already too, that the one class that didn't use them nearly as much, freshmen and sophomores lived on them. I mean, if they didn't have them, they, they didn't know what to do. Juniors could care less about them. They could use them as target practice, they could use them as whatever device they wanted to. If, for them, the classes hadn't migrated to it enough. And so for juniors next year, those classes have to be that way because all those sophomores are a hundred percent used to using it already. You know, they're gonna throw their arms up if they're not using it as a junior, and so, and seniors use it quite a bit, but they need to use it more as well. But our focus was freshmen and sophomores anyway, moving forward.
Any other questions? Okay, we need to have a motion to modify our insurance.
I have a motion, the iPad, iPad, iPad present.
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yes, Cory?
Yep.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay, act on additional employee through flex funding.
Okay, like last year, we utilized flex funding to basically hire a full-time certified teacher to be within a classroom. We had never ac- or we hadn't accessed that over the last few years prior to. I would recommend that in the first grade, we hire Justine Vensel as a certified teacher. She cannot have her own classroom under the flex funding, but she can teach within that classroom. There'll be twenty-one kids, but it'll be basically with two teachers in there then. Her entire salary will be paid then through flex funding. And so this would be the second year that we accessed flex funding to do very simple, very good possibility, then the following year she might follow up with the second grade then, for instance, as those kids go from first to second grade. So it makes smaller, more manageable numbers moving forward, plus the state pays for it then as flex funding.
Okay, we have a motion.
I like that motion, add different employees through flex funding.
I'll send you that. Stacy, Quinn, yes, Cory, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, act on lunch prices, sixty-one fifteen.
Last year, we raised, we raised meals by five cents and we raised, we did not raise milk. Milk went up for this next year about six cents, and so I'd recommend that we raise milk prices five cents. And meals, we will transfer, we've already transferred fifteen thousand dollars into the lunch program, most likely we'll have to transfer another fifteen now at the next meeting or wait till the next fiscal year. I'd recommend that we also increase meal prices then by ten cents. I will credit our cooks, you know, about mid-year, you know, we, we just didn't have kids eating. They really changed up the routine and, and really gave options that kids wanted, which was a heck of a lot of chicken. But kids, that did increase then the number of kids eating as the year went on, so I think they were a little bit more satisfied with the meals that they were getting, so.
And I think it's important that people know that they need to fill out the free and reduced meal, because that helps toward, toward the meals. So even if you don't qualify, filling them back in and sending them in does help.
So if we don't qualify, go ahead and fill it out anyway?
It's nice to have that, you know, just because for federal reporting, as soon as we hit forty percent free and reduced, we actually receive more federal money. You know, we talked about state money that's disappeared. Our federal money has just dropped dramatically. I mean, we're receiving probably a quarter of what we received a few years ago. And so as soon as you hit that forty percent threshold, you do actually receive additional monies from the federal government, so.
So if we didn't qualify, they're still leaving, they're still filling it out.
It's, it's nice to have it. I mean, just in the, the mere case that you might, for instance, so.
Okay.
So. Okay, we need a motion for that. And deals. I'll make a motion and then we increase the, the meals on the level. One second.
Yes, Cory?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Stacy?
Okay, here's the bad thing, huh? Then go to the next one, act on student fees policy. Because we raised meal prices, we now have to change the student fees policy. And so we also have to have a hearing on that then because we changed student fees policy, so we'll now have a hearing then on the student fees policy, and the main reason is because of the milk and the lunch price increase, so.
So do we need a motion for the first reading?
We do, so we gotta make that a first reading and then we'll have to, we have to do a second reading on that one because we gotta have a hearing first.
So we need a motion for the first reading. Policy sixty-one fifteen.
I'll make a motion that we have a hearing for policy sixty-one fifteen.
One second. Cory?
Yep.
Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
Stacy?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, that will be next month then. Act on board policy thirty-three-eight, procedures, bidding construction projects, first reading.
Okay, all of the following policies are all basically suggestions that through legislation and the, and the changes in the past session, that we need to make changes towards the next school year. This comes from our collabor- or collaborative determining through the ESU, so these are all suggestions and requirements that we have to do moving forward. There is a law change on hiring an architect, so in, in legislation, any building project over a hundred thousand dollars now requires the hiring of an architect to do so. So we need to put in a new policy thirty-three-eight that addresses that. And you can wait a second.
We wait a second.
Yeah, if you, if you so choose, you sure can.
So we need a motion on policy thirty-three-eight, first reading, wait, wait a second.
Yep.
I'll make a motion and do the policy change on policy three-zero-three-eight.
Wayne?
Yes, Cory?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Stacy?
Yeah.
Okay, act on board policy fifty-four-oh-eight, high school credit for middle school courses.
Okay, this would be used, and this would be used, and we've done this in the past, for instance, pre-algebra and algebra, there are junior high kids that take that course. Now, moving forward, you have to have a policy that states that that can be provided as high school credit. The other scenario that has come up, for instance, a kid or a student fails junior high, there's been times where instead of giving them a, a exploratory course, again, we've given them a high school course to start catching up on some of their credits. So that way that follows with them then when they become a freshman, it's kind of like, or credit recovery and they get them back on track towards their normal graduation. So technically now, we need to have a policy towards that that would allow them to take high school credit while in middle schools if it is a high school course.
Okay. Any questions? Any motions on policy fifty-four-oh-eight? First reading, wait a second. Yeah, make that motion on policy fifty-four, wait a second reading. Wait a second.
Mark?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes. Yes, Cory?
Yeah. Okay, act on policy fifty-four, fifty-three forty, junior high eligibility.
Okay, basically it states now that the NSAA is the junior high umbrella, you know, just like they sanction high school events, they now sanction junior high events. So as opposed to following rule ten on some things, now you follow the NSAA guidelines. And I do believe last year, we didn't have any policies we had to change based on the legislative session. This year, we have a few.
This year, we really haven't launched.
We do not.
So we really need to act on board policy fifty-four, fifty-three forty. First reading, wait a second.
If I don't like NSA, can I protest?
No.
Okay. I act for, act on policy, board policy fifty-three forty for junior high.
Cory?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, act on board policy thirty-one fifteen, safe pupil transportation plan.
Section eight is an addition based on drop-off sites that are seen as uncertain or unsafe. Obviously, there was probably some legal action pertaining to this where, you know, a bus driver thought it was unsafe, decided to take that kid home, as opposed to leaving that person at that, that site. And so we need to now add procedures in the event the drop-off location is uncertain or appears unsafe to leave students. In the event that the drop-off location is uncertain or appears unsafe to leave students, the driver will make every attempt to the following, radio transportation of these children, only to adult responsible, and dispatch and notify appropriate law enforcement, so, you know, fire at that home, a different individual at that home, any of those things that might tell that driver not to drop that student off there.
Does that bus driver know all this? Does that bus driver know all this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. But obviously, this is in response to something that has occurred across the nation.
Okay, act on board policy thirty-one fifteen. First reading, wait a second.
Act on board policy thirty-nine fifteen, first reading, wait a second.
Six seconds.
Dan.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yeah.
Wayne, yes.
Corey.
Yeah.
Mark.
Yes. And? Act on board policy fifty-two forty-one, concussion policy.
Okay, just need to add return to learn, and so that way you can have adaptive curriculum during the time that they are on the return to play and those types of protocols.
I'll make a motion to add added, return to learn as a requirement for our concussion policy.
Awesome. Stacy.
Yeah.
Wayne. Yes. Corey.
Yeah.
Mark.
Yes.
Alright, set the date for next year, give word of education meeting on December two thousand and sixteen. Student fees hearing then six-twenty. I need to have that one taken.
Yep.
Yep. So that we need a motion to adjourn.
Mark, I have a question. Before your turn.
Sure.
Will Mr. Wallace be coaching football?
No.
Okay.
Is this boring?
Yeah, so you got a little tear up over there, like a little piece flipping up, that's like almost along the foot, so you might wanna get it.
Okay.
A valuation, sorry, that's just like, mm.
I like what you did there. Okay, that's up. Thanks, everybody.
Yes.
Yes.